All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees Meeting. We will call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Good evening, everybody. We will start with the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, wow. Yeah, let's. Sorry about that.
Oops. And in Caitlin's place today, we have Scott Anderson, our business office assistant.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Trustee Gagani?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
And President Toppick?
Here.
All right. I was so eager to move us along today. Now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We'll give it to Dave again.
Dave?
So moved.
My second.
Can we call the roll for the vote, please?
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
And President Toppick?
Yes. Okay. Consent agenda passes, and we will move on to public comment. I think everybody knows the basic rules. Keep it to five minutes, preferably more like three minutes if you can. Please no interrupting people. Direct your comments up here. You know, keep it reasonably civil, and we'll all do fine. So with that, I will open the floor to public comment.
Good evening. Eileen Briner. I'm a resident. Why does EQDG work so closely with the library? They coordinate programming with the help of the library. It's like EQDG is an arm of the library. No other group is given this special attention and access. I asked about a year ago if a pro-life program could be presented with the library. I was told that that would be way too controversial. Hmm. That's not very inclusive of the library to deny certain ideas from being presented with the help of library staff. This is blatant hypocrisy. I ask you, the board, to take into the account the actual diversity of ideas presented at the library. Please make this library a welcoming place for all to discover, grow, play, and learn, not just some. For your information, there are 26 communities with library board members up for election in DuPage County this spring. Twenty-six. Everyone made it sound like elected library boards were an anomaly. There are at least 26 in DuPage County. Many of our neighbors have elected library boards. Westmont, Hinsdale, Darian, Lisle, Clarendon Hills, and Glenellen, to name just a few. There are only seven villages that do not have elected library boards. Just wanted to clear the air on that because I got the impression that there weren't many around, and it's really the opposite. I want to bring your attention to a Patch article from January 28, 2025. It reads, "A man sleeping in the men's restroom at the Elmhurst Public Library was found last week with a loaded gun," local police said. He was charged with aggravated unlawful possession of a weapon. Three counts: obstructing identification, unlawful possession of drug paraphernalia, and criminal trespass to a building. The incident was reported at 9:08 PM Friday, a few minutes after the library closed for the night. It was unclear how long Castner had been in the library. Castner was taken to the DuPage County Jail. Police said Castner was also wanted on four DuPage County warrants, charging failure to appear in court. This is a neighbor library. It could be here. I think you, the board, should consider security officers instead of a social worker. I want to remind you that Arlington Heights, the Gold Standard Library, has full-time security and no social worker. I also need to mention that the director has never done an active shooter training at the library. This is neglect of duty for the director. The ultimate responsibility falls on you, the trustees. We need to get our priorities here. We need safety and diversity of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Hoish. I'm a longtime resident of Downers Grove, and I thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. A month ago, President Trump has started the process of restoring moral values, common sense, and freedom of speech in our country, and has ended DEI with an executive order that banned diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as DEI programs, in the federal government. Our blue state of Illinois has expressed resistance. Specifically, Illinois Governor Pritzker and Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson have said they will defy this law and others and resist compliance. At a recent meeting of this library board, some of the library board members indicated that they intend to keep on doing DEI, which is a concern to me and many others. Tonight, I'm here to ask those of you that may have said that or thought that to please reconsider. I am asking you to be accountable to the taxpayers financially and otherwise. Without revisiting all that we've said before about all the reasons why DEI has to stop, I will look forward with you. This is important because you, as the library board trustees, have a responsibility to represent constituents, the Downers Grove taxpayers, all of them. This Downers Grove Public Library must avoid incurring liability for violations of the law. They may be civil rights laws for discrimination. They may be laws pertaining to failure to keep the library in a safe environment. Whatever the case, I think that is a heightened need, heightened need at this point in the library's life. And I recognize that we have been staying after the activities ongoing in the library, and we will continue to do that. Laws, state and federal, prohibit discrimination, of course, and the Constitution prohibits disparate treatment. Our laws require full disclosure, transparency, and honest reporting of the facts. In the spirit of seeing the light of truth, we expect those facts to be disclosed and readily available, and many times they are. And we also expect you to adhere to the president's edict that there are two sexes, male and female, which is what I've always believed. In a free society, minorities have the same rights under the law as everyone else. So there is truly no need for any preference or special assistance. Minorities are identified by their ethnicity, their race, their gender, have the same opportunities to succeed as everyone else, whether it means participating in school programs, getting accepted to a university, or landing a job. That should apply. They have the same opportunities to succeed, and they can succeed through merit, hard work, and their unique talents, just like the rest of us. If one opportunity doesn't work out for them, others will arise, and any person can revise academic or career goals as they go. The beauty of equality of opportunity, which is what I've always operated under, is that it leads to maturity, growth, competition, and innovation, which is sorely needed in this community and in our country. As a member of Downers Grove since 1985, I've always supported equal rights for everyone. DEI is normal under autocratic rule but has no place in representative democracy. And for the past five years, our library has, I believe, caused great harm and injustice by the identity-based policymaking and the leaning political activism that we have experienced, highlighting and promoting pornography, sexualization of children, and negatism toward U.S. history. And of course, it's a much larger issue than just Downers Grove. So I, and the other good citizens of Downers Grove, believe DEI is wrong, it's illegal, and because it exposes your library to liability for malfeasance, for not complying with the current trend and what the way the companies are going, there's an extra heightened need for you to be cautious of how you proceed in this regard. So the cost of lawsuits wouldn't just affect the library. Of course, it's paid, it would have to be paid for by the taxpayers. And I believe we've had enough of the costs that are forced against our will, the things that we don't want or need that has been charged by the library's budget. So we're not looking forward to having any resistance. We don't want to have to pay for any legal defense claims of any kind related to the library's operation and conduct. So please do consider following the current trend and respect our need for accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Molly. I'm a Downers Grove resident and a frequent library user. I wanted to take a moment to thank the Downers Grove Public Library for providing a warm, welcoming environment where everyone in our community, no matter their background or circumstances, can find knowledge, connection, and support. I've been, as I've mentioned at previous library board meetings, the library has always been a safe place where my entire family has access to books, programs, and many other resources that support our interests and needs. Unfortunately, this level of access to resources is not guaranteed for my youngest child and many other places, as he has a rare genetic syndrome. His level of access to resources has nothing to do with the syndrome itself, but stems from the ways that many other places, such as schools, movie theaters, trampoline parks, or playgrounds, are set up for people who might have things like hearing loss, or speech delays, or auditory processing challenges, or physical disabilities. These systemic obstacles to accessing resources impact not only my youngest, but often also impact his older brother and our entire family anytime we want to do something together. Our family knows firsthand what it is like when public spaces do not consider the diverse needs that exist in our community. This is not about politics or rhetoric for me and for so many others. This is why, in addition to just wanting to be a kind neighbor, it is also so important to me that our library remains an inclusive space for all of us. I want LGBTQ+ youth to have spaces where they can find acceptance, support, and love for being who they are. I want children of color to get to read books about people who look like them and learn about history that includes their ancestors. I want those like my son, who are living with disabilities, to be able to access information in a way that works for their bodies and their brains without worrying about the judgment of others. Considering the diverse needs and experiences of everyone in our community does not mean that anyone else has less access to resources. It means we all have the same access. And for the record, those of us with diverse needs in our families, which is many of us in our community, also pay taxes. So once again, I am truly thankful to have a library that is inclusive for my family and for all who visit. On a slightly more specific note, I'd like to share the impact that the Cards for Kids program has had in my house. Both of my kids were so excited and proud when they got their very own library cards. They have already used them to check out books multiple times, and my oldest has recently learned how to put books on hold and access the e-library all by himself. It's been so amazing to see them take even more interest in exploring all that our library has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Kylie Spahn, Downers Grove resident. I don't have a speech prepared, but I have some comments that I would like to share. Firstly, on the history of Downers Grove Library and the form of library that we have. The village of Downers Grove in, let's see, it was in 1911. The village of Downers Grove became a commission form of government. When it did, all boards' commissions fell unto the village, under the village of Downers Grove, as a commissioner-appointed body. So while we elect our commissioners to the village council, under the Library Act, the mayor and our village council have the authority to appoint trustees. In the 1970s, the Library Act was amended so that any libraries that were formed, I think it was before 1964 or 1968, that were under a commission form of government would remain so, and that in order for that library to be changed into an elected library board, it would need an act of state government bonding. So that, it's not as easy as putting a referendum on a ballot and saying, "Do you want an elected library board?" There is actually substantial costs that are going to be associated with it that will be ongoing, not to mention the legal legalities of that. The other comment I would like to make is about DEI. So every woman in this beautiful facility right now is DEI. Every person of color is DEI. Every person with a chronic illness is DEI. Every senior citizen that is able to remain employed is a DEI. Every single disabled person, whether you have an invisible disability, like myself, or if you are wheeled in a wheelchair, you're a DEI. So I really get offended because when people come up and say that DEI is not America, America is DEI. Our community is DEI. The richness that Downers Grove has grown into, it is such a welcoming, loving, committed community. And we see that when someone puts out a GoFundMe for an accident victim in our community, or when the Busy Bee Bakery owner was really ill with COVID. We always come to help our neighbors, and that, I think, is one of the biggest benefits of living in Downers Grove. We are not Westmont. We are not Elmhurst. We have a safe library, a safe space for our kids to come enjoy a craft kit, use a study hall, hang out with their friends. It's a safe space for our homeless people, who are not dangerous, to come and be warm or to cool off in summer. And that is a beautiful thing, when we can welcome everybody, every DEI that is our Downers Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Pollock, Downers Grove resident, longtime library user. Just want to make sure, you know, people are talking about security and comparing us to Arlington Heights. Arlington Heights is 75,000 people. Downers Grove is 50,000 people, so 50% larger of a community. Our library budget is $6.5 million. Arlington Heights' budget is $15 million. So I think the reason they can afford extra security and taking these extra steps is probably because they are raising 50% more money per capita than where in Downers Grove. So I'm fully supportive of increasing library budget to be able to cover those kinds of things. I generally hear people complaining about the budget, so I'm not quite sure how to resolve that difference, but I just want to make sure it's based on facts. One other quick point. I agree with the sentiments echoed in terms of the library should provide same sort of services, same sort of benefits to all people, minorities, all different kinds of people here. So I very much appreciate the DEI efforts to ensure that that happens, because I know that we've got a group of people that are very much trying to bring back Jim Crow, and that's the last thing we need here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Pritchison. I'm a Downers Grove resident and a frequent patron of this library. Once again, I thank you for supporting LGBTQ+ books, materials, and programs at this library. As I have previously stated, I wish this had all been available when our son was coming to terms with his sexual identity, because as his parents, we might have better served him on his journey. He, too, would definitely have benefited from having readily available resources. Our constitutional right to access information is a pillar of our democracy. If we want young people to become upstanding citizens, they must be able to engage in intellectual and ideological exploration. Banning books, making them inaccessible, labeling them as pornographic severely limits discussion about race, gender, sexual orientation, disabilities, and equally important, inhibits their intellectual growth and development. As adults, our goal should be to guide young people in utilizing critical thinking skills so that they can make decisions based on facts and careful consideration, not on fear, ignorance, and bigotry. Limiting access to arbitrarily selected information prevents our youth from learning important life skills. It also tells kids that they don't count, don't matter, don't deserve to be seen or heard, and that they are unworthy. This is demeaning, damaging, and unhealthy. So any talk about protecting the children must include LGBTQ+ kids because they, too, are children. All children should be encouraged to be their authentic selves, and all children should be protected from those who seek to make them invisible. Adults, too. There are those who continue to insist that books, materials, and programs that LGBTQ+ members of our community, as well as cisgendered heterosexuals, value should be removed or hidden. There has been a call even to return to a time of God-fearing Christian values, as if fearing God were intrinsic in guaranteeing freedom from pornography. I'd like to highlight the absurdity of that claim by providing a snapshot of religious attendance in this country. According to a Gallup poll taken in 2023, 32% of U.S. adults reported having attended a religious service the prior week, a decline from 44% in 2000 and the high of 49% in 1958. But at the same time religious attendance was peaking, sexually explicit magazines saw a record rise in circulation and were prominently displayed in pharmacies, newsstands, and grocery stores across the country. Interestingly, as attendance at religious institutions has declined, so have sales of pornographic magazines, steadily falling since 1979, with a nearly 50% reduction between 1980 and 1989. While correlation might not indicate a causal relationship between lower attendance at places of worship and fewer erotic magazines, there is clearly a direct relationship between what we convey to young people about who they are, what we allow them to see, read, feel, think, and discuss, and how they turn out as adults. If we think God-fearing religion will cure kids from being their authentic selves, we are not only unrealistic, we are hurtful, mean-spirited, and cause real damage. Continuing to include books, materials, and programs that represent the spectrum of who they are and who they aspire to be should always be part of this library, and I commend you for continuing to make that the reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Briner, longtime resident of Downers Grove. It only takes one. Downers Grove moms, ask yourselves, are your children safer in our library than they were a year ago? The answer is no. In November of last year, I asked trustee President Toppick and trustee Williams to study the library safety issue and report to you, the public, and me on this matter. Three months later, nothing. No response. Nothing done. Crickets. Still waiting. Hey, maybe tonight we'll hear something. Something like, "We're studying and thinking about implementing a similar security program utilized by the Arlington Heights Library." We mentioned the library at Arlington Heights because often Director Milovic calls this her gold star. We want to be like Arlington Heights. What is their program? Simple. A full-time trained security team with team members in their library at all open hours. Oh, and they utilize the Arlington Heights Village social worker. Director Milovic apparently wants no security, no full-time security team in our library. Rather, she wants to add her own full-time social worker for $80,000 a year. Yeah, I hear we're tight on our budget. I heard that earlier tonight. Well, spoiler alert. Downers Grove has a full-time social worker, just like Arlington Heights. Now, also, let me remind you that we ended 2024 with 16 incidents in the library that required police to come and intervene. Yet Director Milovic tells us over and over again, "Hey, the library safety is safe for our kids." Well, this is delusional. The library's not safe. You know, our library owes the moms and their children a safer library, especially considering that we provide Director Milovic, as you know, with a $7 million budget. $7 million through DG residents' tax dollars. It will only take one, one of these incidents to go wrong, and you would hear the DG community demanding, "How did we let this happen?" Well, folks, you're watching it live, why it might happen. Director Milovic, the trustees, and even worse, the village council will have let it happen by doing nothing to secure the library. They let it happen. It only takes one. Coulda, woulda, shoulda. These people continue to fail us. They continue to invite disaster by not implementing a library security program. An alert here. Folks, there's an election in a couple of weeks in April for new village council members. Demand that candidates for this office are for better safety in our library, for your children. Remember, it only takes one. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Bill Cook. I'm a resident of Downers Grove and an enthusiastic supporter of the Downers Grove Library, its mission, its staff, you, the board that governs it. My wife and I are thrilled at the transformation we've seen in the past decade. The improvements to the building, the adoption of new information technology, the introduction of leading-edge programming, services, and collections. I've been coming to these meetings for several months now, and I'm pleased by how the members of this board, by words and actions, so clearly demonstrate their love for this institution and the community that it serves, and in turn, the love that the community shows with the enthusiastic support of your programming and mission. Now, that word "love" gets thrown around a lot in these meetings and all quarters, and though I confess to feeling at times some real cognitive dissonance in hearing it bandied about by some people in some contexts. But perhaps it'd be good to consider a practical definition of the term, what it is, what it is not, and how it should be experienced. Love is patient. Love is kind. Love is not envious, or boastful, or arrogant, or rude. It does not insist on its own way. It is not irritable. It is not rude. it is not resentful, it does not rejoice in wrongdoing, but rejoices in the truth. It bears all things, it believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things, and love never ends. I don't think one needs to be a theologian to recognize when love is in the person's heart and in their work, and when it is not. I hope that each month for the coming years that this board will remember this definition as you gather to your mission, enabling this library enabling this library to thrive along with the community of Downers Grove and to serve all of its residents, neighbors, and guests. So grace and peace to all of you in all of your endeavors. Know that you have my gratitude, enduring support, and affection.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Okay, we will move on to trustee comments then. Anyone want to kick us off?
I will. I just had an announcement. The middle of April is National Library Week. Our foundation is having a celebration of that with a showing of a documentary at Skeleton Key Brewery on April 9th. And I didn't see someone from the foundation here who was going to announce how Amanda is here. I preempted you because I saw it on the webpage and bought my ticket, and I just wanted to put it out there. It's going to be an interesting evening. And Skeleton Key is a huge supporter of the local libraries. So it's always a lot of fun, too, to go to an event there. So you can see Amanda for details.
I just wanted to, first of all, just draw attention to the Discoveries issue this month. I really appreciate the annual report, the design of it. Julie, please give marketing department and everyone that works on the newsletter our compliments because it's very well presented, and it's really exciting to see these numbers. I'm really proud of all the work of the library and all the staff that worked so hard to think of innovative programming, and obviously, all the work that the public does with the donations to the cupboard and attending the programs and showing what you're interested in. So it's a really great read, so please check it out if you haven't. And then just one last thing, I just wanted to just make a quick statement. As a trustee, I'm committed to supporting and advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. The library will continue to monitor the legality of these efforts. Still, I will remain steadfast in advocating for policies and initiatives that promote fairness, representation, and equal opportunities for all. As our value state, the library is an inclusive and welcoming environment. We encourage individuals to tailor their library experience to their own moral values rather than impose their personal beliefs on an entire community that may have diverse perspectives and lived experiences. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I want to first thank everyone who came to our meet-and-greet coffee on a very cold Saturday morning. And I know the Civic Center event was in the morning, so it was a very busy day. So I appreciate everyone who came. It's a really great opportunity for us to speak one-on-one to people, hear your ideas, and, you know, just get to chat in a little bit of a more informal way. It was also a Saturday morning, and many of you know that it is storytime morning. So it was packed, a packed house. And my favorite was, I think it was a three- or four-year-old who was using the collection windows as like window shopping. And she's like, I want that, and I want that. And it was really adorable. But that was a packed morning, and then Julie sent us pictures. Thank you, Julie, of this past Saturday. That, it was incredible, I think over 120 people.
134 was the final count for drop-in storytime.
Drop-in story, 134 people for Ms. Kristen Storytime. So that is a lot of very happy patrons attending the library, doing what they do, enjoying the resources. And thank you, Julie, for sending us those pictures. It's really great for us to see the library in action. As Swatda mentioned, if you have not seen the Discoveries report, but I see that there are some scattered about, so this is pretty. So thank you to Cindy and her team because this is beautiful, and I love easy visual numbers and facts. And there's a few that really caught my eye. There was over 1 million items circulated, around 400,000 library visits, 73,000 program attendees, over 1,800 programs offered, over 100 home deliveries, over 6,000 virtual program views, over 200,000 e-materials downloaded, 28,000 donations to the cupboard, 35,000 computer sessions. That's just a few of the numbers. I'm highlighting those in particular because when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, which actually, side note, Dave Humphries is also highlighted here. There's like a little thing about Dave. If you don't know Dave, this man has committed so much of his life to serving our community. And I'm really happy that this was here and I got to see what you're reading and what you watch on TV. And before I do my interview, I have to watch more quality television because I don't watch such things. If you limit your view to what diversity, equity, inclusion is, you don't understand how much of this is diversity, equity, inclusion. You don't understand that in-person events and virtual events are inclusion. It's accessibility. We don't think about home deliveries being part of accessibility, then you're not thinking about that's inclusion. If you don't think about the diversity of our gallery exhibits, artists of all ages, color, mediums, that is diversity. You know, it's offering programs in basic sewing one day and robots in another. It's how working with resources like People's Resource Center, teaching people basic computer skills, or how to use Excel, or how to use Word, that offer them an equitable resource that they can also apply for jobs, giving them opportunities that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise. That is also DEI, is also diversity, equity, inclusion. There is something for everyone, and there's a welcoming place for all of our patrons. Now, moving on. We are going to be looking at our collection policy today, and I am really proud of this updated policy. The staff has worked very hard, and I think that we should all be really proud. I know that we might have some questions about some specific things, but. And then lastly, I want to briefly address the ad hoc committee of the village council. And welcome and thank commissioners Sadowski, Fugit, and Tully who are here. Thank you for attending our meeting. It means a lot to us for you to have you here. My hope is that you being here tonight and us moving forward with this ad hoc committee will foster and strengthen the relationship that we have between the library and the village. That being said, on my part, I'm hopeful that some outstanding issues regarding my term are resolved soon so we can move forward with clarity and honoring our commitments to one another as well as our commitment to this community.
That's it.
I'll go next. So I echo that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Tully and Commissioner Sadowski-Fugit for showing up today. Represents an effort at collaboration. And I hope to work with you on the ad hoc committee. And they're at the back of the room suggesting that they are the class clowns. So surprised by that. Pardon my voice, I've had a cold for the last week and a half. It's a miracle that I'm even here. So I'd like to talk about diversity of thought. Eileen Briner and I coordinated today, so. Diversity of thought is an important library value. It ensures materials are broadly representative of the entire community's interests. It reinforces inclusivity, and it deepens understanding. Our proposed selection policy includes diversity of subjects, ideas, and viewpoints as one of several criteria for determining whether a particular material should be selected. The staff can include multiple criteria in making a selection, and specific materials do not need to meet all criteria. Notably, diversity of thought does not mean equal balance in materials across the current local divisions. With that said, I think it's important to have some representation. And so I decided to conduct a test to assess diversity of thought at our library. I searched the catalog for 18 conservative works. These sources range from scholarly works to nonfiction books by popular writers, from fiction to print media. Here are my findings. 19, so 18 publications total, right? Nine publications are available at the Downers Grove Public Library. Five are available on loan from another library. Two are available online as ebooks. Only two of the 18 are unavailable in any format. Those two were by political philosophers. So they were pretentious interests on my part, not really the library's fault. Maybe some of you know Leo Strauss, Straussian's here? I don't know. Okay.
You got one hand.
I figured, okay. As I know you're all creating your summer, and maybe even spring, reading lists, here are the ones that are available at our libraries. Free to Choose, a personal statement, Milton and Rose Friedman. The Closing of the American Mind, Alan Bloom. Atlas Shrunk, Ayn Rand. The Madness of Crouch, Gender, Race, and Identity, Douglas Murray. The Right Side of History, Ben Shapiro. Phil Billy Elegy, J.D. Vance. Yes, he's gone on to something. Twelve Rules for Life, Jordan Peterson. And The Wall Street Journal, National Review. I thought that was appropriate context, that you can find conservative sources in our library. Doesn't seem that there's an activist agenda to exclude them. That's it for now, I'm going to have some comments on the circulation policy once we're at that point.
Thank you. Dave?
Seems like it's all been said here. I will say that I'm not surprised, but it's very affirming to see how many residents of Downers Grove read The Discoveries every couple of months when it comes out. Most of, no, not most of them, many of them have approached me this week saying they read it and they saw my picture in it. You can run, but you can't hide. But more importantly, The Discoveries, as has been pointed out, you took my thunder here, and I'm only going to say that there's a great deal of very interesting and wonderful information and statistics, all the programs that are offered in a given time period. Who knew that of the 436 visitors to the library, 77,610 asked reference questions? Now, how useful that information is questionable, but it affirms what we do at this diocese, I think. And more importantly, it credits our professional library staff. I don't think I'm going to add anything to the issue of DEI. DEI includes everyone and excludes no one. I will say, I was going to say this later in the discussion of the of the collection management discussion, but material selection is guided by the professional expertise of staff, circulation data, national and international news and events, publishing and social trends, and is informed by equity, diversity, and inclusion principles. I don't believe that DEI, dare I say yet, is illegal. At least not in Downers Grove. And I believe this board has been uniform in affirming its support. Thank you.
Okay, just a few things from me. We're wrapping up Black History Month. I want to thank our staff for putting on some great programming. Next month includes St. Patrick's Day, as probably everyone knows, and every local bar owner I'm sure knows because it's probably half the revenue for the year. So I would just highlight, you know, there's a great Irish literary tradition. There are so many great authors from Ireland. It might be a good time to take a look at our offerings on that. And we have Introduction to the Irish Language and an Irish music event coming up next month. So I wanted to put in a little plug for those things. I want to acknowledge that this has been a difficult time for members of our LGBTQ plus community. I am glad to hear that we have been a source of information and a welcoming place for everyone, and just want to reassure everyone, there are, of course, no plans to discontinue any of that, and that will all certainly be continuing. While we're talking about our collections policy in a little bit, I really think this is sort of a core of what a library is. I mean, these are really important principles. So we're not going to vote on that tonight. We're going to talk about it, and then we're going to presumably vote on it in a month, and we can even take longer if we want it to take longer. So I really encourage people to engage in this. You know, if people have suggestions or complaints about the collection management policy, this is the opportunity to weigh in on those things. And I assure you that we're going to listen to the input, and we're going to ultimately make the best decision for the library. But I want to thank everyone who put in the hard work on the collections, especially Marty, who, as our board secretary, took a lot of the role in working through those things, so thank you. Somewhat related to that, I want to point out that we do have a policy on partnerships. And if you'd like to partner with us, we have criteria for that, and you can ask to do that, and then we can evaluate that under the policy that we have. So we do have a policy that governs that, so I wanted to make that clear. And then just sort of briefly on the ad hoc committee, I don't have a lot to say. There's just some last little issues kind of getting worked out. I think everyone is looking forward to that work beginning. I will join my colleagues in thanking the commissioners who are here this evening. So, and I want to thank Barnali and Nathan for taking the time to be involved in that. It is going to be, you know, a significant time commitment, and also to our staff as well, who will be committing time to that as well. So I think there will be very good work being done there, and I think we are all eager to have that begin. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and we will move on to the library director's report.
Well, thank you. I wanted to, and Barnali went through some of it, but I want to take a look. You all have on your seats, that is the extended version of the annual report. A lot of that information is in this month's Discoveries, but this is the extended version that's available in the library. And I want to take a little bit different look at it and just share a breakdown with you by hour that the library was open in 2024. So in 2024, we were open 3,662 hours. And so for each of those hours, the library was open. 296 items were checked out. 119 people visited the library. 20 attended a program. 21 asked a reference question. 10 used a library computer. Four reserved a room. Three used a pickup locker. And for that, the cost per taxpayer for each hour we were open was three cents. And for our visits, 0.0004% of visits resulted in an incident report in 2024, or approximately one in every 2,400 visits. So I also want to highlight that our incidents were down 21% in 2024. And looking at, if you take a look at our incident statistics on the bottom of page 95, if you are following along in the library, in the board packet, you can see that the decline kind of began. decline kind of began in fall of 2023, when our social work interns first got a clinical supervisor and were able to expand their ability to work directly with patrons. And it took a further nosedive in March of 2024, when we started the Teen Services Desk, which is about to have its one-year anniversary on Saturday. So I think those two things have really contributed to that 21% decrease in our incidents. And we'll hear a little bit more about our building and its safety and security, because we are going to hand this over now to Ian Noor, our Building Operations Director, who will give us a brief overview of the Building Operations Department. For those of you who've been coming to the library for a while, this is something that we do kind of on a regular basis. We have our various managers come to meetings and talk about their departments. So Ian gets to be first in 2025.
Really fun stuff.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. This thing's really sensitive. I'm just going to, I have a loud voice to begin with, so I don't want to back y'all back, sorry. So Building Operations, we consider, Building Operations consists of three departments, three departments, maintenance, security, and custodial services. Altogether, we're just a team of five. So not the biggest, but we have a very large impact on the building. We serve our community, patrons, and the library staff. And a lot of what Building Operations does happens behind the scenes, but we do do our best to make sure that we're visible, so patrons and staff know that we're available and ready to assist when needed. Myself, I'm the Building Operations Director. I handle building maintenance and repairs, oversee the building operations monitors, also is our, what we call our security staff, our custodian, and I myself am also a monitor. So if anybody didn't know that and they see the big bald guy walking around, that's because I'm a full-time security person. We also have two other full-time security personnel, Danny Barcoyac and Miriam Mejia. I know some of our patrons have had the pleasure of, you know, meeting with them because they've assisted in programs that were held. So you might not realize that they're security, but they're are. And we do have a full-time security staff of three, and then one part-timer, and the building does have security personnel every hour that we're open. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. So when it comes to the repairs and maintenance of the building, part of my job is assessing the useful life of current building equipment systems. I'm in the system, the planning of upcoming equipment replacements. I'm also responsible for obtaining vendor services and working with our contracted vendors such as our nightly cleaning company to ensure that the library is being cleaned to industry standards. I work with our mechanical contractor to ensure building HVAC equipment is in working order, make sure that the automation system is being followed, so there aren't any hiccups on a 100-degree day and the air conditioning isn't working. You know, meaning lifespan of equipment is one of the most important things because we all know how expensive that can be. Yes, I can do repairs, but we just want to remember that it's always good to have another vendor out there that is also doing preventative maintenance because we want to extend that and make sure that, you know, everything runs smoothly and it meets its end of life. So seeking reviewing of vetting service providers and obtaining competitive pricing for service contracts is also a big part of my job. Responsible for, like I mentioned, proactive and preventative maintenance on the facility's equipment, including boiler loop testing and record retention, rooftop unit preventive maintenance such as belts, filters, coil cleaning, exhaust fan maintenance. I schedule and oversee the annual testing of our safety systems such as fire alarm system, our AEDs that we have, fire extinguishers, responsible for scheduling, assisting, and following up with required state and village inspections as well. I lost my place, so please forgive me. I also handle paint and drywall work, carpentry, electrical, low voltage, and plumbing. Perform seasonal work such as maintaining the library's gardens and grounds, as well as snow and ice removal, and also record-keeping for that. Often asked to do special projects for the library and its departments. Projects that we've done in the past have included transforming the Mouse Cafe into the Kids Play Cafe, building the light wall in the kids' area, the teen gaming cabinet up in Teen Central. And in 2024, some of the projects that we did was the small remodel of the cafe to offer more vending options. If you haven't noticed, there's three machines now instead of two because we made that opening bigger. Transformation of the STEM room, which included the addition of cabinetry and countertops. We updated the tween area. I built a entertainment cabinet, and we did some electrical work for the TV in there. Updates to Teen Central to make that a more pronounced teen area. New modern lighting throughout the first-floor lobby, in case you haven't noticed. Additional, I relocated data lines for the forthcoming Wi-Fi upgrade, and probably a few other things that I honestly can't think of at the moment. Another thing that I do is I like to investigate new technology and trends that would benefit the library. So for example, Facility Site is a patron counting software that I learned about from Julie, which she learned about from ILA. I got in touch with them and got some information and kind of weighed out, because we did have patron counting software, but as I met with the owner, learned about all the data that we were missing from our current system. And so for a minor cost, we actually upgraded it. It's been in place since January, and it feeds us real-time information as to the building's occupancy. We have three sensors, one at the north entrance, one at the south entrance, and one at the kids' room. And we, as time goes on and we're using this software, we're able to compare weeks, days, hours, minutes, and we can see who's occupying those spaces, how many visitors we're having. It's honestly a huge amount of data that we're really looking forward to sharing with you. We're just waiting to get a little bit more, so that way you actually have something to see and compare. What else? I'm sorry, that is it for my portion of it. The Building Operations Monitors, as I mentioned, we have three. We have, not including myself, we have Danny Barcoyac and Miriam Mejia, who are full-time, and then Elvis Sedgko, who is our part-time monitor. And their job is to ensure that the library is a place for all to enjoy by reinforcing the library's code of conduct and interacting with our patrons and staff. The Building Operations Monitors, we try to lead through empathy and be a listening ear, but please don't take that as we're being lenient, because if you've ever noticed, you know, we do uphold the code of conduct, and when it's not being followed, you know, that's when we have to ask, you know, for correction. So they make hourly patrols of the interior and exterior, monitor the library's surveillance camera system, respond to requests for assistance from patrons and staff, and that can be anything from help getting AV equipment for the meeting room setup because something's not working to helping somebody after their car with their books. So they also assist me with special projects and work requests. And then biggest thing is assist in emergency situations, building evacuations, 911 calls, drills that we hold. As every patient interaction is different and at times can be challenging, the monitors do their very best to be attentive, patient, and as I said, lead with empathy. The library monitors receive training in de-escalation tactics, providing backup for coworkers, body language and the impact it has during an interaction, pretty much what to do and what not to do, active listening, and when it comes down to it, when is it the right call to call the police and ask for help? Large amount of the training the monitors receive is learned through interactions and opportunities that are presented. As I mentioned, every interaction is different, and what works one time won't always work the next. Being able to pivot your approach and think quickly is something that is fine-tuned with every interaction. And being a monitor honestly can be very challenging, but Danny, Miriam, and Elvis do an amazing job, and I'm extremely lucky to have them on our staff. And then finally, we have one custodian, Kevin Montgomery, who assists me with building upkeep, repairs, and maintenance as well. He helps me maintain the inventory of supplies such as paper products, because we don't ever want to run out of those in the bathroom. Repairs and maintains anything from book carts to putting together furniture. Again, he will assist me with projects when need be. He does a great job of the upkeep of the gardens and the grounds, setting up the meeting room for the morning's programs, carpet cleaning, dusting, and all the little things that might not get noticed. So that's about all I got, and if you have any questions, I would love to answer them for you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I went to the Facility Site demonstration at the ILA convention, and I kept meaning to ask you if we had looked into that. I'm glad to see that we've got it because it was totally freaking amazing.
It is really cool. You can actually see, like I said, in real time when people are, you know, the kids' room's always one that we watch because it's super busy. So I can't wait until the summertime when we get all that data. And honestly, the more data that we can produce and give to everybody is better. But you can actually like watch the counter as like people are entering and leaving. It never stays stagnant for any amount of time. It's always all over the place. So it's pretty cool. Anything else?
Thank you.
Y'all are wonderful.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to new business collection management policy update discussion.
All right. So, there we go. For anyone following along with the board packet, the collection management policy, the proposed new policy is on pages 37 to 50 of your packet. The redlined version is pages 51 to 66, and the former policy, the outgoing, is pages 67 to 71. I ask that you please ignore the formatting because some of it didn't come over very well into the PDF. But overall, we expanded the sections for introduction, the responsibility, and the scope of the policy. We reworked the purpose section. We made a more comprehensive selection of materials section, and that does include the general criteria. The library's attorney substantially rewrote the donations section. And then we have a more precise reconsideration of materials section that details the process, and we have gone back to having a form. The last overhaul of this policy, we had had a form and we took it away, and now we're adding it back. These things just, you know, as our needs change. And we did look at over a dozen other libraries' policies. We gathered samples, things that we liked. Our adult and teen services manager, Van McGary, and children's services manager, Allison Renell, were very instrumental in that process and helping us, you know, kind of identify what the policy needed. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Just a quick question before we start, just for the benefit of the audience. We do this periodically. This isn't a one-and-done situation. We are, by our own procedures, have to revisit each of these policy sections periodically, and now is the time for collection management. So it'll happen again.
Standards for Illinois libraries say that we look at our policies every other year.
And the Library Act gives some of that responsibility to the trustees, which was, I had kind of the first redraft of it, and I actually had already started looking at it because some things have come up over the last couple of years that I was aware of. I was looking for some clarity on some of the things that seemed a little bit fuzzy and some consistency between policies, so it didn't seem like we were applying one standard here and another standard there, or the procedures for looking at decision-making were the same regardless of what kind of material and so forth. Now, I wasn't doing a word-for-word edit and rewrite, but that was my first shot at it and working, you know, somewhat with Julie and a little bit more with Van. And then after I had my say on it, it did go out to the rest of the trustees too, so we all did have an opportunity to take a look at it. And I'd like to thank Nate, who pushed for the redline version, which really is very helpful, you know, when you're trying to compare and contrast what's going on, and particularly if you're relatively new at this. But I think what the staff came up with and with the input from other stakeholders in it is a lot more viable than what we have, a lot clearer, a lot more consistent.
I was just going to sort of highlight for those who are watching or might watch, a couple of the sections that I think are, I mean, they're all important, but the ones that probably really come up the most and are maybe most central. Section 4.4 is about selection of materials. So of course, we can't stock every piece of material that exists in the world. We have to make decisions about what we're going to select and what we're not going to select. And so this is the section that talks about what those criteria are. So there are some changes that have been made to it. I don't think any of them are earth-shattering changes, but they're there in the redline if people want to get a sense of what's changed there. The other section that I think is probably, you know, of particular importance to the general public here is 4.7, which is requests for review of library resources. So if you request that we obtain something, there's a process that we'll go through to evaluate whether that meets our criteria or not. And if you are not satisfied with the decision, then you can bring that to us as the board, and we ultimately will review that and make a decision. So I think it's really important that we have a process where people feel that they can provide input and that the board will evaluate if there is a belief that the, you know, the staff have not reached a decision that someone would like with regard to a particular resource. So I think we work really hard to get a good mix of materials, as Nathan sort of talked about earlier. But if people have suggestions for what we can do better, we want to hear that. And if there's things you want us to obtain, there's a process to go through, and we'll go through the process, and you can take it to us if you're not satisfied with the staff's review. So I think just as you're looking at this, those are kind of the, certainly look at all of it, but those are the sections that I think are going to be kind of the most important to the public.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments, positive comments, actually. This document involves a huge amount of work by our staff and some of our trustees. It's, it guides how any item enters or leaves our library, not for checkout, but for every item in the collection. And I was impressed a little bit with the expansion of the 4.1, the purpose of the whole document. It says, "The purpose of Downers Grove Public Library's collection is to meet the informational, educational, cultural, and recreational needs of the community." And I think it's important to understand that sentence. I'm not going to explain it. It's self-explanatory, I believe, but it's not just a warehouse of books. It allows for all members of the community to be included and represented. The library is committed to upholding the principles of intellectual freedom and as such does not censor or emphasize any particular political, social, or religious viewpoint. So I believe that that is an important part of So, I believe that that is an important part of the purpose of this whole document and the whole purpose of the discussion. Beyond that, I just thank profusely the professional staff and the trustees that have upgraded and made current this collection development, the collection management policy.
A few process-oriented comments and then a few substantive ones, too. In terms of our policy review and approval process, I very much appreciate receiving a redline version of the policy. I'm grateful that it was included in the board packet. I think that's important for transparency to the community. I also think it's important for us to be fully informed as to what changed. The second thing I'd like to say is I'm grateful that Matt put this as a discussion item for this meeting. Public can comment on it at the next meeting before we vote on it. I think that's the right process. Thank you. Substantive comments. The policy includes a reference to the fact that the library board of trustees support the ALAs' library bill of rights, the freedom to read statement, and the freedom to view statement. I think those are all very important, and what I was going to suggest is that we link to those documents in the final policy. On the general criteria for selection, there were a couple that I wanted some clarification on or maybe to sort of wordsmith. One is price and availability. I was wondering whether those should be distinct criteria. Kind of depends on what you mean by availability. Does availability refer to scarcity? Because if so, then I could kind of understand how price and availability are connected. A rare book might be desirable for me to see, but you may not want to purchase it. But on price, I prefer cost to price. I think the word cost emphasizes the library's limited financial resources. It's also consistent with some of the other policies that I've seen from other libraries. But that's a nitpick, admittedly. And then finally, separate from availability, if availability means scarcity, I've seen some other policies that say availability of materials from other libraries, the theory being that if it is available on loan at another library, and there's not high demand to our library, that it may sort of be a factor weighing against stocking it at our library as part of our catalog because people can get it on loan. So, that was one thing, price and availability, and availability of materials at other libraries. And then the second one was relevance to the community or geographical interests. I was actually at the equity advisory team meeting where this was talked about and what they meant. I just suggest that we clarify that this includes local history and works by local creators or have some sort of separate line item that emphasizes that. I think that's a factor that, you know, like Robin's husband, John, wrote a book. I'd like to see that book in the library if possible. And so, I think it's sort of valuable to our community to have emphasis on both our local history and our local authors. The final point, not related to the general criteria, but just overarching. I found another library that's policy provided the following. Consideration will be given to the work as a whole. No work shall be excluded because of specific content taken out of context. I could imagine that there might be, say, a graphic novel that has certain imagery in the graphic novel that some people find objectionable, but when you look at the artistic work as a whole, that graphic novel is clearly telling a story, an important story. And so, I think we should make it explicit that you can't take things out of context and then get offended. Thank you.
Do we have other questions or comments about the policy? Dave?
Just a couple of things. You triggered something in me that I remembered. One is the term availability, and I read that as availability from other libraries as well as availability in the marketplace. We do have, as the documents have explained, we, let's see, we loaned out forty-nine thousand books to other libraries. So, it was available to another library because it was in our library, and that works both ways. I just want to point that out, that we do that a great deal. The other thing is the issue of local history, local authors, and so forth. And I think that something by a local history and a local author is very important for it to be in the library in the sense that they get a little extra attention for it, but it still has to meet the other kinds of criteria. In other words, just because, I have to avoid making this sound negative, and I don't mean to do that, but just because somebody locally wrote something doesn't mean that it meets some of the other criteria of authenticity, accuracy, value of information, et cetera. So, I just wanted to mention that. There's also a section that is kind of related to that statement on donations. It's up to the library staff to screen donations to the library because, just because, and again, I don't mean to sound it negative, but because someone wants to donate something to the library doesn't mean that it meets the criteria for being included in the library building or in the library's collection. And so, that is pretty clearly stated in this document only. And in the next month, when you're reading through here, take a look at that section as well. Thank you.
To that point, also, there's a section on self-published works. So, if you want to become a local author and publish yourself, there's criteria for whether you can get that type of work in as well.
We actually did go back and forth on how to word local history, local and regional interest, local authors, and it ended up somewhere in the mix of things not being specified. So, thank you for bringing it back up because that was one of the things that I played around with in my first shot at it.
Sure.
Thank you, Matt. Great. Let me just make this request to staff. When we do this in the next, assuming we're going to vote next time, and again, I do encourage people come out, and you can email us in the meantime, like we want to get feedback on this. The next packet, if we could include a redline that compares the proposal as of today with any changes that are made in the interim, so people can very clearly see what's changed from what we're talking about today to corporation.
So, incremental redline.
Exactly. And maybe if we can just include a note or a link back to the, to this version, so if people want to trace it all the way back to the current operative version, they can do that. I think that would be the most clear so that people can trace that through, so.
The redline from the current draft.
Yeah, correct. That make sense, everybody? Okay. All right. Anything else we need to discuss on the collections policy? Okay, that takes us to unfinished business building, planning, study, cost estimates presentation.
All right. And we have with us tonight both our John Shales from Shales McNutt Construction, the construction management firm that we work with who did the cost estimation for this, and also Dan Port from Product Architecture and Design, who actually designed the options that were estimated. So, take it away, John.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. I think you've gone through the design of those different options previously. So, this is adding, I like to say, the reality to it of the costs associated with those options at that point.
Can you just frame it for everyone with what the, just generally what the options are we're talking about, what part of the building we're talking about?
Okay, so this is the, well, primarily the options, the most expensive options, is adding the ADA accessible ramp at the front entrance inside the building so that somebody could enter the building and then get down to the lower level to get to the elevator and access the rest of the building that way.
Talking about the north entrance.
North entrance.
Off the parking lot.
Yeah. Currently, at that north entrance, there is an outside ADA ramp. So, this would be bringing it inside. And then there's some other renovation work up on second floor that's separate pricing and whatnot, a little bit on the first floor as well. So, those are the things that, and I don't think any of that has changed from the previous presentation of that. Is that correct?
One of the things that it does correct is that currently, when you're walking into the north entrance, if you are requiring handicap accessibility, you actually have to leave the parking lot, go all the way down to the street at the west side of the library, and come back to the entrance. So, you're going about two-hundred-and-fifty feet to get actually two feet from where you actually want it to be. The additional things that are included in the pricing is there is some renovation to the administration suite on the first level, adding some of the offices that are required that they've asked for in terms of functionality for the staff. On the second floor, we are looking at adding a makerspace, and then there are schemes that enclose the teen space, adding additional office space for the IT and adult services offices, and then moving the quiet study to a more quiet part of the library in order to keep the zoning that the libraries worked really hard to establish over the years. Okay, thank you.
Very good. So, getting to the costs, and we're going to go through these, I think this was in your board packet as well. Each one of the options does have some costs associated with it. What each one of those costs that you're looking at includes, not only is it the direct construction costs for the exterior ramps, there's actually two COMED primary lines. Those are lines that have to be moved by COMEDs. So, we do have a significant allowance, about a hundred-thousand-dollar allowance in there for that that has to be moved. So, we're really trying to capture all of the costs. This includes, all of these options include a fifteen percent contingency line item. That's just because the nature of these early concepts, really, it's good planning to have that fifteen percent in there. Obviously, if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used. It remains in the, remains with the library. Many of these options include some furniture, fixtures, equipment as well. So, really, what this is trying to paint is the entire picture of a project, so it's covering all costs, not leaving anything out. And then furthermore, we did escalate each one of these costs to try to include a factor for inflation to 2027 so that, you know, this is really trying to anticipate also when it would be completed as well. So, that's just kind of the overview of all of the prices. So, I'll maybe use the screen a little bit too as well. This is that option number one for the ramp. This is for the exterior, bringing the ramp interior. That's the blue that's being outlined there. That is the most simplistic and least costly from the standpoint of design to bring that in inside and just kind of check the box, if you will. No significant improvements, no added spaces inside the building. Two A, and stop me if you have questions on these, just to kind of go through those. You can see the development of that blue space is really creating something that's a bit more engaging, if you will, and I don't want to use Dan's words at that point, but also a usable space within it with some chairs and some seating and just some additional space at that point. And then two B and three are kind of variations on that of just kind of different shapes. You know, what's being envisioned here is in a part of the cost at that point is that all of the exterior wall would be glass, be very open, be very inviting. You know, it's not just, you know, a dark space to kind of get through. You know, it's supposed to be a part of your front entrance where it's really remaining an open space at that point. So, those are the biggest costs associated with these numbers that are in that bottom-left corner of each one of those sheets at that point. Obviously, there is some inclusion off to the, you know, lower right of the pink areas of some renovations as you go through those areas as well. So, those are the first floor. You can see the relative differences. Certainly, the first option was by far the least expensive at that point, but then the other three options aren't significantly different relative to one another at that point, so.
Can we just see the cost on the first one? Again, just to get a general sense.
Yeah, up there.
Got it, okay. And so, in this version, the café stays where it is.
Correct.
Right? And in the other versions, we're sort of moving the café into the new area and freeing up that space for administrative offices.
That's right. I would say the first scheme solves one problem, the other scheme solves two.
Got it.
Which is the additional spaces for the oven.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the cost guy.
You're doing great.
Any questions on those? That's primarily the first floor and what's taking place on that second floor is a different set of numbers in the following sheets.
Actually, do you want to talk to these? Yeah, so, on these schemes, I think what we really focused on was, again, enclosing the teen space. There's been a lot of discussion, especially in routing of the teens. So, in your first schemes, you'll see that the teen space kind of remains where it's at. We added offices for the teen space, which I think currently the staff that supports the teen space is separate from it, and it's in the open. One of the biggest desires was to get the collection inside, create a wall for noise, obviously, and where kids can come in after school, kind of go hang out and not sort of disrupt the rest of the library, especially on the adult services floor. We also added two additional study rooms. While doing that, we turned the most northern conference room that you see as you walk in from the north entrance, that sort of glowing box above, we turned that into a makerspace, and then there's slight issues of functionality in the existing computer classroom that we were able to fix while adding storage. You'll see in this scheme, too, that we moved the adult services offices into the existing quiet study room. It kind of makes sense, kind of, they're kind of busting at the seams currently. We did create a social workers' office on the second floor, and then we did add the quiet study back in in that lower corner. Really, what that's doing is replacing the magazine collection, when that does tend to dwindle over time. So, we are planning for future things once collections are smaller than they are currently. I would say that scheme B goes more or less directly with, or can go with the scheme that was the sort of least intrusive ramp on the first floor because the additional offices are included on the second floor. And then as we move through the different schemes, really what we're looking at is, again, on this scheme, this is scheme C, we actually shifted the teen north to the other side of the building. What that did is, there's a big, a lot of discussion with the staff and Julie, that teens come in, they kind of walk diagonally across the entire library to get to their space. So, we looked at the idea of actually putting the teen space as close as we could to the stairs so they could come up, turn left, and then turn left directly into their new space. And then what we did is sort of flip-flopped the makerspace and the teen. So, in the first scheme, the makerspace is at the north, and the teen space is on the south. On this scheme, we took the teen space, moved it to the north, and then flipped the maker to the south. The IT staff that currently is, the desks are sort of outside the adult computers, are also going to be running the, are in charge of the makerspace. So, when we do move the makerspace, we also moved their offices down and included the adult computers. So, everything in the north currently today would kind of flip-flop, come to the south, be a little quieter, which I think adult computers would enjoy, and then the north would be, I'm repeating myself slightly, but would be the teen space and the computer classroom, which I think are the most active things on the floor.
Yeah, and then you can see in the lower-left corner, again, you can see the relative costs for each one of those scenarios at that point with, you know, a fair amount of varying in price and how extensive you want to go at that point.
Do we have any questions?
And at this point in the process, what we're really looking at is, these are cost estimates. You don't have to make a decision now. What will happen in the next step will actually be to hire a financial consultant to work with us, and at that point, when we are doing that, then you all can decide what you want to tell them cost-wise out of this so that they can help us plan how to fund the project.
I will say, just, and I'm interrupting, that's rude. I will say that our team has worked together on over twenty projects together. We do lots of library work together. I will say that we are always available. I will say that we are always available for consulting. We kind of look at these as à la carte. So if you want to do the first part or move admin or look at enclosing the teen, we can break those costs out for you so that it isn't all or nothing throughout the process. We've done lots of projects at the library over the last five, six years, improving the tech services offices, youth services offices, smaller things that's sort of manageable within an annual budget. So we do see the ability to kind of break these down smaller, if that's the direction that the board would like to take.
I was just curious, you said you had projected out inflation to 2027. How in this?
We did that in December of 2023.
I was going to say, when did you, when did you do it and how did you do it? Things are, things like building materials now, there's a lot of fluff and speculation going on.
We're not using eggs, right?
Yeah.
No, we simply put a factor of 3% on. So it's, it's not trying to, no crystal ball, you know, nothing along those lines, but it's, it's not ignoring it either. So just trying to anticipate those things. But, but you're right, there's, who knows what's going to take place even over the next six months.
And I think the, one of the values that we have is that because John is doing construction today, yesterday, and tomorrow, that we do, can get up to the point of pricing, if you do choose, whatever project you do choose to go with, whenever that does happen, we can actually go back, look at the pricing, and make sure that you're current. If there's scope adjustment or, or types of adjustment need to be made, we can do that early on in the process, so we're not going out to bid and then having to sort of correct things at that time.
Thank you.
So nothing we need to do today, right? And then next step will be, we kind of take this and start to look at, you know, how we would finance things if we decide to move forward.
Yes. And also, y'all had asked for the capital, our building capital needs assessment, which you approved in the consent agenda. So these fine gentlemen will be coming to you again to talk about the 10-year capital needs of the library with a report they will be doing for us over the next few months. And that will, because we had discussed using that in the financial planning process as well, to ensure that the long-term capital needs of the library are also included as we use a financial planner.
And those are things that are more just sort of the maintenance and upkeep of the building. It's not new stud, this is, these are new things, those are kind of the things we need to do to keep everything in order.
That was like the roof project and the HVAC and all those wonderful things that Ian talked about, the projects that he has done. That, that all came from our capital needs assessment that was done by this team for, in 2017, and that we have done, that was 2017 to 2027. We're down to the end of that, and so this will give us our, our fresh look at the next 10 years.
And I'm sure we're going to have a lot more discussions in the future, but could you take just a minute and maybe touch on the origin, the, the new things that we were just looking at here? The origins of why are we looking at these things? Are they coming out of a strategic plan? Sort of what's the history and the origins of that?
Yes, these are all strategic plan goals. They came primarily from our strategic retreat, where we had community members, staff members, all of our trustees. We also had members of the, the village, we had village staff, we had Mayor Bob Barnett was with us. And those were those projects that have been informing our strategic plan goals and priorities. So the big things that came out of that was, the number one thing was ADA accessibility from the parking lot. And then it was acoustical separation of the teens from the rest of the library. The addition of a makery. And the one thing that we actually did not highlight, the inclusion of a sensory and, like a wellness room in the children's department that could be used for nursing mothers, for children with sensory issues. So just enclosing a very small room, that's actually like the least of these projects.
The timeout room.
Yeah. The timeout room works too, as well as some of the staffing needs attendant with those various projects.
Yeah, I realize that a year, year and a half ago, we were talking about roughing out some of these areas and what we're adding, what we're deleting, and that sort of a thing. It's, it's been a while since we did that, and I'm trying to get back up to speed on that. At what point in the current process is it appropriate to ask questions about why did we do this? Or what was the, or not, not so much the cost, it'll have an impact on cost, I realize, but.
Yeah, now?
Well, one thing that frankly, I'm embarrassed that I don't remember the answer to, I know it must have been discussed, but Conference Room A disappears from the availability here. And it's not the best meeting room in the building because of acoustics, because of visibility, all kinds of reasons. But it is a room that gets booked pretty heavily.
One, one of the things that we really looked at was the functionality of Conference Room A is not great. It's loud, it's echoey, it's often got a lot of glare. So in these, as Dan alluded to, working on the functionality issues of the training room, to where we could use the training room for, as more of a multi-purpose space. Now, now you remember that. Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Because it would just allow us to have mobile tables, do better technology, make it more of a room like this, at obviously a smaller scale, that it could have, you know, meetings of eight people to 20 to 25.
Yeah. And the Conference Room A currently does about 16 people, so we were looking to get somewhere in that, up to 20 in the training room if we can.
In the training room now.
Yeah.
We enlarged the training room.
Yes.
Yep, I remember that, so.
As I recall, when you, gentlemen, when we're here before, someone in the process of this had uncovered some anomalies and who had titled what pieces of the property, where are we on all of that?
Oh, okay. We, we do still need to work on that with the village staff. It, so the pin numbers, the parcels were never consolidated when the village created the parking lot. And so the, the forest south lot, which is generally referred to as the library lot, is actually multiple parcels slash pin numbers, according to the county. And so because the library technically leases sections of these parcels, it's a little unclear on where all those boundaries are. And some of those parcels are actually under the current library building. So Dave Fieldman, our village manager, is aware of it, Enzo Petracca, her village attorney, we know that we have to do this cleanup work. We have not yet gotten to it, but we do know it needs to be done, and all parties are in, we're all in agreement on what we believe the boundaries are.
So a new, a new survey and then.
Yes.
Transfers.
And just to, to get all those pins consolidated and to make the boundaries what we think they are. This, functionally, the library's property has been up to the curb line of that parking lot. That's really how we've operated with the village, and it has been the understanding among staff on both sides that that's, that's where the line is. But what we found is that the legal descriptions do not line up to our understanding.
We went to do the survey for the, to figure out exactly the slopes coming for the, to get rid of the existing ramp and create the new.
Yeah.
And as part of the survey, you read that ridiculous paragraph that's on the top of your D, that no one knows what it is, but it's actually a verbal description of how to actually find the lots from a central point. So within the county, so we, we couldn't do it as the parcels were completely mixed up. So we do not, you now have the map that shows exactly where each and all the parcels are. I think there's.
Yeah, there, there is a ridiculous number of parcels.
But it is clearly lined up now, and so we're able to finish the survey and then finish the work, but it also helped to sort of decipher the hieroglyphics.
And now we have current surveys on all of those parcels, which will help us when it comes to fixing it.
Just, just, just to clarify something for our audience, I saw some eyes rolling back there and some question marks on faces. The library, most of the library sits on land owned by the library.
Yes.
The library lot, quote unquote, is not the library lot at all, it's the Village of Downers Grove lot, and it sits on land owned by the Village of Downers Grove. However, the line between those two parcels zigs and zags a lot, and it turns out that a little bit of the library sits on Village of Downers Grove land, and part of the parking lot may be on library land, and so on. So they're going to fix all that. It doesn't really matter, it's all public land, but it is important to the county and so on.
Julie, you said it comes up to the curb on the lot side?
Okay, so technically, the library leases that portion of, of what is owned by the village. And it has always been our understanding that the library's property ends at the curb.
So the, the current existing ramp is then on the village's property?
The, hang on. The first portion of the ramp, so let's go doo, 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 all the way back to the existing, there we are. All right, so this is the parking lot. From the far corner of the parking lot, this piece of ramp here, that first one that goes from the parking lot to the sidewalk, that is village. The rest, once you make that turn from the sidewalk and come down, this is along the front of the library. That is owned by, that is the library's property. So the understanding among staff is that the, the line is here along the curb, so right in front of all the parking spaces, but basically kind of cuts off here.
Got it.
I know, clear as mud, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I was just asking to sort of.
Any other questions?
But it will be fixed.
That's it? Okay. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
For the good work.
Thanks.
Okay. Final item is, we do have an executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. Anyone want to move for us to go into closed session for those purposes?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose that you just named.
I have a second.
Do we roll call this one? Yeah. Trusty Gagani?
Yes.
Trusty Humphries?
Yes.
Trusty Kuntia?
Yes.
Trusty Sleda?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
And President Tapper?
Yes.
All right.
I don't think we anticipate any business after the.
Right, yeah, just so everyone knows, we don't, we're, don't anticipate voting or doing anything when we come out, so.
Don't wait for us.
No need to wait.
Don't stand.
You are welcome to.
But leave the lights on for us.